Doug, ¿puedes dirigirnos al salón de las banderas?
¡Vamos, por favor! ¡Hola! ¡Pienso en el旗章 de los Estados Unidos de América! ¡Y a la República por la que se sostiene una nación bajo Dios! ¡Que es visible, con libertad y justicia para todos!
Lisa, ¿puedo hacer un llamado de orden, por favor?
¿Mister Preeble?
Aquí.
¿Mister Lambrea?
Aquí.
¿Claire Holtzman?
Aquí. El 4 de diciembre de 2018, un anuncio oficial de esta reunión fue enviado al prensa de la ciudad de Vettner, el periódico Mainland y el Current fueron publicados en el boletín de la ciudad y en el sitio web de la ciudad. Para que el público sepa, si han venido aquí antes de la reunión de hoy, cuando hacemos nuestro taller, lo hacemos aquí, los comisioneros junto con todos nuestros departamentos, porque es un taller. Y luego, para la reunión regular, estarán en la sala. Lo primero que vamos a hacer esta noche... ¿Mi micrófono funciona también? Bien, lo primero que vamos a hacer esta noche es... Tenemos un señor que tiene que firmar, así que no voy a hablar demasiado, David, pero tengo que hablar un poco, ¿de acuerdo? Esta noche vamos a firmar David Funk como capitán de nuestra patrulla de la playa de Vettner. Así que solo quiero hablar un poco, no sé a David personalmente, pero sé que desde que era adolescente, porque la playa en la que fui toda mi vida fue la playa de la sede, desde que tenía diez años, no toda mi vida. Desde que tenía diez años, esa ha sido mi playa. Recuerdo decirle, David, cuando era adolescente, como guardián de vida. Así que diré lo que sé. Tú eres verdaderamente dedicado y loyal a Vettner y a la patrulla de la playa. Tú eres un estelar, guardián de vida, lieutenant, y convertirse en capitán no es algo que nos han dado, es algo que has ganado durante muchos, muchos años. Estoy segura de que cuando empiece la temporada y todos los guardián de vida descubran, serán muy emocionados, porque no es que te sea amado, eres altamente respetado por los rango de poderes y por nuestro jefe, el Sr. Bergman. Así que vas a venir aquí, puedes traer a tu familia, y vamos a firmarte. Yo declaro tu nombre.
Yo, David Funk.
Doy solemnemente juramento
Doy solemnemente juramento.
De que apoyaré la Constitución
De que apoyaré la Constitución.
De los Estados Unidos
De los Estados Unidos.
Y la Constitución
Y la Constitución.
Del estado de Nueva Jersey
Del estado de Nueva Jersey.
Y yo llevaré fe y lealtad
Y lealtad.
A los mismos
A los mismos.
Y al gobierno establecido
Y al gobierno establecido.
En los Estados Unidos
En los Estados Unidos.
Y en este estado.
Y en este estado.
Bajo la autoridad del pueblo
Bajo la autoridad del pueblo.
Y que yo haré con fe
Y que yo haré con fe
Imparcialmente
Imparcialmente.
Y justamente performaré
Y justamente performaré.
Todos los deberes de
Todos los deberes de
Oficina
Oficina.
De capitán de la patrulla de la playa de Vettner.
De capitán de la patrulla de la playa de Vettner.
Afecto al 1 de enero de 2019.
Afecto al 1 de enero de 2019.
Según mi mejor habilidad y habilidad
Según mi mejor habilidad y habilidad.
Así como Dios.
Así como Dios.
¿Quieres tomar una foto? Sí, sí, vamos a tomar una foto. Te voy a dejar el signo antes de partir, ¿de acuerdo? Vamos a tomar una foto. ¡Solo gira, Tim, dónde estás! ¡Jefe! Sí, vamos a ponerlo cerca de la flecha. Vamos a ponerlo cerca de la flecha.
Creo que deberíamos hacerlo fuera.
¡Jefe, estás aquí! ¿Estamos listos? ¡El jefe está aquí! ¡Claro! Él es parte de la patrulla de la playa. ¿Estás seguro? Mira esto. ¡Jefe! ¿Está bien? Gracias. No quiero charlar, gracias mucho.
¡Ustedes saben!
Muy talentoso. Bueno, antes de entrar en el taller, la siguiente parte de nuestra reunión, estamos aquí... ¿Me puede dar un orden, por favor? Lo siguiente que tenemos en agenda es que estamos aquí para... Esta noche queremos reconocer el duro trabajo dedicado por nuestro comité de parada. Shelley es el líder, y esperemos que todos vinieran esta noche. Si no, tenemos certificados para todos. Son tres años, pero el año pasado nos cayó el viento, pero cada año se mejora. Y todos los voluntarios trabajan infinitamente para tener una hermosa y exitosa parada de navidad en Vettner. Cada año se hace más grande, más grande y más emocionante. Así que nosotros, el comisionado y la ciudad de Vettner, queremos agradecerte. Así que lo mínimo que podemos hacer es reconocerte esta noche con el certificado.
Estoy de acuerdo.
Primero tenemos a Abby, Battaglia. Siguiente, Cindy Weinroth. Siguiente, Colin Fuentes. Karen Warner. Karen no está aquí, ¿de acuerdo? La siguiente persona realmente necesita ayuda. Peter. Peter, Shelley su esposo. ¡Hay un corazón rojo en usted! Siguiente, Rose Hamilton. ¿Rose? Sean no está aquí. Sean no está aquí, Lisa.
Sean es genial.
Y la reina. ¿Princesa? De la parada, la líder de la parada. Lo sé.
¡Shelley!
¿Cómo es que todos vayan con sus certificados? Vamos a tomar una foto. Vamos a ir a buscar la flecha, tenemos un poco más de espacio. Tenemos un invitado esta noche, tenemos el portavoz John Ridley aquí. ¿Hola, John?
¿Cómo estás, Abby?
Estoy bien. Feliz año nuevo.
Gracias.
Gracias, gracias. Gracias por el tiempo.
Bien, lo veremos. Ya, pero bueno. Estoy de acuerdo.
Tal vez fondue.
Sí, es un poco.
O derris. Bien, así que vamos a empezar nuestros reportes departamentales ahora. Nuestro primer es Bill Crowthers, es nuestro asesor de impuestos.
¿Cómo estás esta noche?
Bien.
Lo más importante, este año hemos aumentado... El año pasado, de 17 a 18, nuestros gastos aumentaron un 4,6 millones. Y de este año, hemos aumentado 6,6 millones. Así que es un aumento de dos millones de dólares en comparación con el año anterior. Así que creo que estamos en el mismo sentido. Teníamos muchos demos este año, teníamos unos 30 casas que estaban encerradas. Teníamos mucho destrucción en los hogares. Así que el mercado de la realty está muy descendente. Eso es todo.
Y Bill, el ratio... Alguno de ti y yo miramos hace varios años atrás, era un 107%.
Sí.
Lo que significaba que las casas estaban vendiendo por menos de lo que se había evaluado.
Correcto.
Estaban bajo un 100%.
Sí.
¿Dónde están ahora?
Un 92%.
¿Un 92%?
Sí.
Oh, estoy muy emocionado.
El teléfono está emocionado también.
Un 92%, así que eso significa que
¿El ratio?
Las casas están vendiendo por más de lo que se ha evaluado. Tenemos gente ahora en guerra de compras. Sí, Vettner se ha convertido en un mercado donde la gente quiere venir y pagan más que el valor evaluado, lo cual es enorme.
Y hay áreas diferentes que son mejores que otras áreas, pero hay algunas áreas que están vendiendo. Porque he pasado por todos los casos, algunos de ellos estaban en el mercado durante días, antes estaban en los cientos de días.
Correcto.
Así que es realmente muy grande.
Es emocionante.
Sí.
En el primer año de la campaña, estábamos buscando a Addis, donde el año pasado no hubo un año y no hubo el año pasado.
Correcto, exacto. Teníamos, creo, 11 millones o 10 millones, y luego teníamos 14 millones el año pasado. Pero con los demandas y demos, las demos sacan la valoración de mejora, por eso hemos aumentado 6,6 millones en total, lo cual es bueno, porque no caíamos.
Y antes de que entráramos en el cargo, había 900 a 1000 demandas al año. ¿Cuántas tuvimos este año?
197.
100. ¿Y cuántas perdieron?
No tantas, había algunas que se solucionaron, pero cuando fuimos a la audiencia, solo hubo algunas que realmente obtuvieron una reducción que no pensábamos que hubiera.
Así que nuestro ingreso anticipado de impuestos es un número real ahora.
Sí, es un gran efecto. El caso de la campaña, 900 a 1000 versus...
Menos de 200.
Sí, correcto. Sí, porque estaba hasta 1100, 1200, 1000.
Y todas las personas que demandaron entonces ganaron.
La mayoría de ellos.
Sí.
Era difícil defender un 107 años atrás.
Sí.
Exacto.
Es costoso defenderlo también.
Absolutamente.
Sí, bien, así que nuestros gastos legales son mucho menos.
Y estoy cuidando de diferentes áreas, podemos tener planes de compliance el próximo año.
Portales para el regalado de nuevo.
Sí, planes de compliance donde puedes especializarte en un área que sea creciendo más que el resto del pueblo o disminuyendo más que el resto del pueblo. O puedes hacer casi como una regalada.
Sí, recuerdan que dijimos que podíamos hacer...
Así que es como una regalada.
Bueno, una regalada de crecimiento, pero esto es solo en diferentes sectores.
Estoy feliz de haber contratado a usted. Has hecho un gran trabajo.
Gracias.
Porque los ciudadanos de Vettner realmente lo son.
También quiero decir, si alguien está viendo, si tienen preguntas sobre su evaluación, pueden venir. Puedo ver todas las ventas, mostrarles las ventas en tiempo real, lo que están vendiendo, los vendidos usables, porque mucha gente...
Ah, bien.
Se contratan, hacen demandas y dicen, este casa salió, pero fue una cerrada o un venta de bienes. De esa manera, al menos antes de que se firme, pueden venir y ver si es incluso valioso. Y estoy dispuesto a hablar con alguien sobre eso.
Bien, gracias.
Claro.
Tienes que ir.
Tengo un poco de tiempo.
Bien. Siguiente, tenemos a Jim Pakinasky, y es nuestro director de departamento. Jim, pon el micrófono cerca de ti.
Un par de cosas para empezar con nuestros diferentes proyectos de video. Nuestro canal de YouTube está funcionando. Ciudad de Vettner, Ciudad de Vettner, ciudad de Nueva Jersey. Así que mientras se filman las videos, los subiremos a YouTube. Así que eso está en marcha. Tú y John están planeando una reunión la próxima semana, pronto la próxima semana, para discutir las diferentes plataformas de software. Así que mientras John se vaya del video, podremos tomarlo nosotros mismos. Hablé con Tim de ProVideo hoy. Una vez que logré obtener una orden de compra, y debería haber un presupuesto temporal de software pronto, dijo que le tomaría un par de días para poder venir e instalar la cámara de la cámara en la pared. El audio del sistema de sonido estará directamente vinculado a él. Y luego, cualquiera que sea la plataforma de software, nos permitirá grabar y potencialmente livestream directo.
Oh, fue el de la live.
Live, sí. Ambas plataformas que elegimos, se livestreamarán a YouTube y Facebook. Una de las dos también se livestreamará directamente a un sitio web, la segunda no tiene eso. El segundo proyecto de video que quisimos hablar con Lance un poco sobre, Tim vino hoy, y tiene una segunda televisión aquí. Que vinculará ambas televisiones juntas y nos permitirá, ya sea en una reunión de comisionado o en una reunión de la audiencia, poder mostrar planes, diseños, lo que sea, lo que sea que pueda ser, desde un solo. Estamos viendo tanto en HVMI, feed, o también potencialmente usando broadcast.
Con los mampas en las paredes, ¿es ese el que están tirando?
Sí, ese es el que puede tirar. Tim me mostró uno hoy, y va a mirar y ver si hay una capacidad de tirar. Que realmente montaría en el suelo, en lugar de tener que pegarlo directamente a la pared. Y solo se quedaría cerca de lo que es la silla. Porque son estas grandes paredes de plástico, es difícil de pegar. Así que me mostró eso hoy, va a volver al vendedor a ver si puede tener uno que sea tirable con eso. Correcto, exacto. Así que va a dejarme saber. Estoy viendo potencialmente una televisión de 65 o 70 pulgadas allí. Solo algo... Algo un poco más grande para poder ver, y luego eventualmente aumentar la tamaño de la televisión allí. Así que esos deberían ser, diría que en el próximo mes, deberíamos estar listos para todo eso. En el área de la control de la seguridad, ahora estamos en todos los ámbitos de las clientes geológicas. Todavía hay algunos errores que estamos trabajando en regards a algunos datos viniendo, algunas cosas siendo hechas, pero estamos trabajando con el vendedor en eso. Y dentro de la próxima semana o así, podrán lanzar la plataforma web a todos los departamentos, para que puedan tener una capacidad de búsqueda de información. De policía, tribunales, escuela pública, como sea necesario, para que no bajen algunos llamados a los departamentos. Así que eso debería estar en marcha.
¿Ese es donde todos los tablets, todos los...?
Bueno, eso es para los departamentos, no los departamentos, pero para la control de la seguridad, para sus inspecciones, para sus COs, para los alquileres, todo ese tipo de cosas. Y lo que se dará a los departamentos, cualquier departamento que necesite, será reabrirá acceso a la información de propiedad. Tendrán que buscar, ya sabes, permisos y todo eso. La policía y la policía podrán buscar, ya sabes, información de propietario, ya sabes, para poder, ya sabes... Sí, y eventualmente, toda la plataforma también tendrá una parte de cobertura pública para que los contratistas puedan buscar sus permisos. Así que eso, nuevamente, iluminará, podrán entrar y ver el estado de todo su... Todo su trabajo, que también podría potencialmente reducir los operos que vengan, porque si esto es ahora bueno, si está ahí, la gente podría poder buscarlo en lugar de tener que llamar y obtener esa información. Así que eso está todo integrado en el programa ya, solo es una cuestión de encenderlo todo. Estamos tratando de tomar un enfoque lento con eso, para asegurarnos de que las chicas en el oficio tengan un nivel de confort adecuado. Cuando hicimos esto, cuando hicimos una transición como esta en 2006, fue aproximadamente un año y medio antes de que fuéramos un 100% cómodos. Sabes, pasar de un sistema AS400 a una plataforma web, estamos en la misma curva de aprendizaje ahora mismo, tratando de hacer esa transición. Pero va a ser un gran programa una vez que el 100% se ha acabado. Y están trabajando con ello, solo unos pocos errores aquí y allí que estamos pasando. Next one, now that that's pretty much taken care of, we'll be able to get back and focus on the facility dude end to do the same thing with public works. That's, that's the next one, now that this one is done. They can get the rest of the information from our admin ad that we need. And then we can get that, that in place. And it'll be the same type of thing. It'll be the whole work order system, then it'll be an inventory system, then it's the management system, all cloud based, all built, built in. And also there's a public facing portion if we want to be able to utilize it. Since, it's going to be a discussion on where we want to go with the whole C-Click fix because a lot of these companies, and Tim and I spoke with the website vendor.
Right.
A lot of people are, have their own mobile three-one-one options. That give that, code enforcement program has something for it. The facility dude has something, the website has something. You know, at some point, once we get to it, we can sort of decide which, which one of them. The nice part about all of these, of these ones is they're specific to the department. So a resident, you know, does something, it goes directly to their department, you know, in a little better.
Well, now C-Click fixes.
It goes, it goes out in everybody's face.
County side where it's, you, and then you disperse it as well.
Um, well, the stuff, yeah, okay, yeah, it's all, it's all the county. So, and these are all programs that are already paying for it, not any extra costs for any of this.
Right, good.
So it's, it's a matter of, you know, which direction. It's something, let's get the programs up and running, then we can decide where, where we want to go.
We can swap out the one that works the best.
Exactly, exactly. On the website next, we had a night, a good conversation with the vendor yesterday. The design is much, much improved?
Yes, I'll, I'll agree with that.
Still a lot, still a lot of work to do, still a lot of tweaking with a lot of the specific.
I'll be right outside of Tim's office tonight. Yeah, it's good.
And stuff, so it's, it's a matter of working. And now we're, you know, we've pretty much tried to come to a weekly update, same as where we're growing. Now that ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the data is there, it's now a matter of getting them to put it in the formats that we need.
It feels like we're probably just traction on it, they have their data, they can, the look and feel of this stuff.
Yeah, absolutely. Our Firehouse software, not that I really want to, really want to say this, but unfortunately our government shutdown is slowing us up on getting data from FEMA in order to do it, but we, we might talk a little bit right before the meeting. And we're just going to go forward with getting it, and if we need to add, you know, we'll add that data. Most of the data that we're looking to get is historical data. So it's not stuff that we're looking to, you know, that is going to hinder us. But this is going to be a great platform because it has been directly integrated with the police dispatch. So it's, everything ties, everything ties together on one single platform rather than having enforcers for police and Firehouse software for Firehouse and E S P for inspections, everything's going to be together. All one day this might tie directly together. So with plan right now, and it might tweak a little bit based on some of the stuff, but our plan is February first to be able to be live with this. It may change based off of some of the stuff, but our plan is within the next, next month to have it, have it live and running. Our public works wiring project, originally we're supposed to be a hundred percent complete today. We ran into a little bit of a snag with the conduit going between the two buildings. We did get the main building a hundred percent done, up running, new phone lines, new, new data lines. Tomorrow morning, they're coming back to tie in the other building. So that, that, the last main building, they need to have wiring upgraded to two thousand, two, your two thousand technology. And that will be good. And it'll, we're set for the future. So we want to put cameras and stuff into public work or the stuff. All the, all the infrastructure is already there and in place. And the last, last thing is our county I T. Had a very good productive meeting with Brian and his team yesterday. Couple of things that are going to be happening within the next few weeks to a month is we'll be implementing a definitive help desk system in, in which we'll be utilizing the county's help desk picketing structure. So any and all calls from all departments will directly go to the county's help desk.
Great.
We'll work in there. We'll be moving to a cloud based email system. Basically, our users are not going to see any difference, it's still Outlook, it's still Exchange, it's just a cloud based version, and hopefully be a little more, a little more robust. And allow us to take in some of Microsoft's. Like, everything to Microsoft has been cloud based. Within the next four years, you're not going to be able to buy anything, you're not going to be able to buy a single disc for anything with Microsoft Drive. So everything's transitioning to a cloud based system. Good, bad, or indifferent. Unfortunately, on the, on the negative side of it, it's going to increase costs a lot. But it's going to be better because as upgrades come and as changes come, it's already all built in. And the nice part about it is we're not going to be dependent on our infrastructure here. It's all cloud, so as long as you have the internet connection, you can get your email, you can get all your stuff. So that will be going in within the next few weeks. Our virtualization of servers should also be happening, so then from there, we'll be able to utilize the county's own backup system. And electrical work is slated for next week within the server room, so that'll all tie all that into it.
The county has two backups?
Yes. That's what we will, both of the backups and everything here. Plus, we'll still have backup here.
Well, ours is in every county, they have.
Yeah, so we'll have triple redundancy because I'm still going to back up some stuff, back up stuff here, and then we'll back up to the county, and the county will back up to old, old courthouse. So we'll have triple redundancy, making sure that everything's in place. But it's, it's definitely moving forward and will be beneficial for everyone.
Great.
That's where we're at right now.
We have a slower working, the ability, apartment heads and probably payroll to work remotely. Okay.
Yes, I've got, I've got one laptop left to finish. I gotta get yours, and when he's done, I just gotta, we'll go over it with you. I just got one more left to do.
Next up, we have Margaret Pakinowski, and Margaret is our tax collector.
Hi. Um, our tax sale was December twenty-eighth. We got the number down to a hundred and forty-six that went into it, and it was no, I'm sorry. An electronic sale. By the time it sold, there was forty-six left. And seven have already paid back the means. There were no municipal means, everything sold at the electronic tax sale. So I had to prepare the certificates, get it out to the lien holders, that's finished. Another thing we're doing is the P D five forms for the senior citizens just to reaffirm the qualified again last year and this year. And we're sending those out, and we're getting a lot of tax payments in for February first. And mortgage companies are starting to pay. And also people are paying the subsequent for the taxes that went into the tax sale. They're paying the two thousand eighteen pounds for tax and mortgages there. And that's about it.
Great.
We are looking at sending the, 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 for trash and recycling collection. Now, with the water and silverware, it'll be a little more.
Well, we'll wait, I can wait tomorrow and find out. Do you guys want a letter or anything to go out for the large bills?
Well, not that one because you have enough money there. Yeah, I don't want to.
I mean, if that's not that heavy, you can have up to three pieces of paper in an envelope. Or you can also tell me a message you want me to put on the bill.
On the bill?
Yeah, so we could do that.
All right.
What does that have a?
Um, first week in March.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret, and do you have to go? Am I correct?
Yeah, there's always some things, because I gotta go to jet here.
We'll let you go pick them up.
Different direction.
Yeah, they have, they have a, a guest doctor coming tonight to do a presentation.
Go enjoy, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next department head is, was, is he yet, yeah, Jimmy Agassi, our code officer. Code enforcement officer.
Jim Agassi. Just shots official zoning officer. We sent out letters for the non-compliant signs to all commercial properties, all realtors, and all contractors. The letter was more or less a draw letter, just telling you, these are the regulations. We're going to follow up with inspections, and then whatever is in violation, you're going to get the violation notice itself. I had maybe two or three people, had probably a hundred letters, that called. No realtors called, no contractors called. And the few people with signs that called were pretty much compliant. So the ones that are an issue, I didn't hear from. And I'll have to go out myself on those and look at each property, determine what I feel is a violation. And then the next course of action will be sending out the violation notice itself. This first round, I wasn't going to send certified. So no summonses can be issued. And then we'll see how we go. And then the next, next round will be certified letters and then follow up with summonses if necessary. And my goal is to have it cleaned up by Memorial Day.
Our goal here is not to be, you know, penalize these people, is to get signs and compliance.
That's why we're going through this elongated process of sending out a nice letter. This is what the ordinance says, and, yeah. So we are, and like I said, anybody who calls, you know, we go over the ordinance. There's some things that we kind of decided are going to be tough to correct. And those, we just want you to know that it isn't, it is not compliant. And the next time you get a sign or it's time to change your awning, these are the regulations. So we are going to work with people.
There's restrictions on where you can put a sign on an awning.
Okay.
Limited to kind of the overlap of the flat. And people have to put them on the front, on the top. So when they wear out, they'll be replaced with what's coming. We're not, we're not, we don't worry.
Right, you don't have to rip your sign down.
Exactly.
Right.
But we do want to get consistent with their sign order.
Yes, and the banners and what have you, so.
Some of the new businesses really took advantage of just putting up, well, I would call temporary signage as their formal signage, which is not accepted.
The big flag, so, you know, the big flag.
They're fine as long as they're, they're out for a period of time and they're brought in.
We're going to, I'm looking at that as a banner.
Right.
So if you're allowed to get a, two banner permits a year for thirty days each, that's the banner that you want to get a permit for, that's fine.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
Special seasonal events, holiday events, whatever, sales, that kind of stuff, you can do that.
But not only here.
No.
I got you.
Exactly. Jimmy, what is the percentage of sign coverage?
Um, windows, twenty percent.
On windows, it's twenty percent?
Yeah.
That's going to be our biggest, that's going to be our biggest end or something.
Jimmy, quick question. What, is there anything, if not, it's not a sign in the window, but like the entire window is covered with merchandise? I mean, you can't, I thought the whole thing is the limit, there's a limitation of space on the window for security.
It's a tricky ordinance because, like you said, is it hung inside the window? Is it on the window? Twenty percent, is twenty percent the lettering or the space of the lettering?
But I'm saying, I know the last time we brought this up, we, somebody.
I, I would say, Mary, what you're referring to is a blight. And we would use a different ordinance for that. Not so much signage, but having your cane goods in the window is a blight and, and go in that direction with it.
Because I thought, what, somebody, who, you've brought it up, Lance, Mr. Lambert, he brought saying that you, that you, the police need to be able to see.
That's what we were talking about.
Right, and there's, I know, I know one.
You're allowed to cover your windows at twenty percent of advertising. That's it.
But this is merchandise, so it would be something different.
Thing is, whether it's visibility in a sign, it's not different.
So you think it's the same, all right.
Unless it's, use an example, you have some storefronts down front that have display windows. That's different, that's set back inside.
Right, right, right.
You have various products in that display window, that's different.
I'm talking about a flat.
I think, I think security, I'll, I'll speak to the chief to see really what he's looking to add as far as visibility in these storefronts. And if we have to twerk in ordinance or two, that's, that's what we do to make it more clear. The sun goes, the sun goes down and my mind goes elsewhere.
No twerking, no twerking with signs.
All right, okay.
Jimmy, I will let you know, there's a, there's a certain business. I, I have, it's very junky. The look of it is, that's my point. So you, you'll do it also.
Right, also, these Airbnb's and short term rentals, we've adopted one ordinance. I spoke to the administrator and Commissioner Landgraf this morning. I have some other ideas that maybe give us a little more bite on some things. And they gave me permission to speak to the solicitor and go over a few more ideas.
Did you get my email, Jim? Because there's, there are sections in that ordinance that I think allows you to do what you want to do, but we'll talk.
Yeah, I was just looking for something more on a annual basis, you know, not when it's, just when there's a problem, but getting to these properties on a yearly basis, or less all around. So like I said, I'll, I'll get ahold of you and we'll see.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, what, what, uh. Ed, Ed Stenson, our superintendent of public works and our city engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. For public works, in addition to our normal daily activities, we're working on following. Tomorrow, we're preparing for the possible weekend storm. We're also working on boardwalk repairs. We are preparing to replace the decking and railing on several of our beach timber walkovers that go from the boardwalk to the beach. We're replacing hurricane straps on pavilion roof structures. And we replace damaged boardwalk joists. That's, they're the ones that where we have the issues with the screws popping up. We can't, we can't sink them because the joists underneath are rotten and we can't burn them home. So we're replacing them as, as we find them, and that, that's kind of an ongoing process. We're also working to remove some of the accumulated sand from the back beaches. This is proving to be a huge challenge, and it's going to be one that continues as our dunes stay and they hold sand back and sand then starts to accrete inward and fills those back beaches. And we start getting complaints about the grasses and things like that. So we're working to remove it. It's a slow process because we don't have access to all of those back beach areas. The ones that we are able to access, we are pulling sand out, you know, trucking them onto the front beach. And we're replacing that sand in front of the beach. So it's a, it's kind of a borders process, but we're making.
You're doing that now?
Yes.
With a small dump.
Yes. And a small dump.
And a small dump.
So, you know, we have to make sure that the boardwalk at our ramps is structurally sound enough to, to handle that. We're using our smaller dumps.
What I think Ray was asking is we want to try to see if air circulation underneath the boardwalk doesn't rot and stuff.
Yeah, so a huge, a huge concern of ours is as that sand accumulates and the elevation grows, it chokes off any air circulation underneath our boardwalk. And that is, that is a significant problem. A, it damages the lumber. But also, as it, as it allows vegetation to grow up in between the boards on the boardwalk, which is tripping hazards, it allows the sand to start accumulating on the boardwalk, which is a slippery hazard. So these are things that we have to track. I've had conversations with the D E P. We're looking at, hopefully meeting with the Army Corps to try to work out a solution in our next beach and Irishman project, which is about two years. We're also replacing some of the steps at the beach street ends that go up and over the bulkhead. We've completed Fredericksburg and Lafayette, and we're looking at other ones that, that need to be repaired or replaced. We are preparing to cap the bulkhead at the Newport Avenue street end by the, by the beach, by the gazebo. Try to clean that up a little bit. And we're also in the process of removing the holiday decorations. A lot of those fun times.
Do you want a location for that?
We did. For capital update, the reconstruction of Burke Avenue has essentially been substantially complete. There will be a final work change order, go up to Commissioner for your consideration, but it will be a reduction in that contract management.
You don't get any.
A reduction?
An under budget route can have out that. And you're going to have some issues there, too.
We, we did, we did, we did some additional, I'm sorry.
I can buy more lights next year.
We. The money gets quick, I think, yes. I think the project came out well. There was some additional work that was done, but also there were some savings in the road profile as it was originally designed, so that worked out enough there. The Atlantic Avenue Street Gate project has been awarded and the contracts have been told accepted by the N J E D A. And they will begin being circulated to the contractor tomorrow, I'm told.
So that's a notice to proceed?
That, once this contract's come back, executed with the bonds and insurance certificates and all of that, then you will get the notice to proceed.
We just got the insurance certificate for ocean late this afternoon. So I think it's going to be okay. Stan looked at it, he said it was okay within one comment. And then I sent that on to Karen Maripon to see if that was, if it was in there on purpose or if that was an.
A little bit of error, didn't it?
An error, yeah.
So I spoke with Karen Lynch this afternoon, I think she said it's been worked out.
Good.
The gutter replacement in Venter Heights, as you know, the gas company did a service renewal project in the seven and eight hundred blocks, so between Wellington and Burke, between Harvard and Dorset Avenue. They will be required to pave those streets. There were several, several areas of gutter that had settled over the years. So we put out a, a project for engineering to design replacement of that settled concrete and also some corner ramps that had done prior to the gas company re-paving. So that project, the commissioners have awarded it to engineering. That, I reviewed the other day, and we'll say about ninety percent complete. And so we should be looking to go out to bid for construction sometime in February. The reconstruction of Kingsley Drive, commissioners have awarded that to engineering as well. So that is moving along. However, we ran into a little snag, that is, the sanitary sewer main on Kingsley Drive has to be replaced. So I am in the process of soliciting proposals from our engineering pool to go replace that sanitary sewer main, so we're going to have that done before we pave it. That'll push the paving back at least to the fall. We will look to have the sewer main replaced this spring and then we'll pave it in the fall. Winchester Avenue Drainage Project, the award of the engineering design for that project is on your agenda tonight, resolution number forty. That is an award we were recommending to Remington and Vernick Engineers for their proposal of twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. That includes the intersection of Washington Avenue and Winchester along with gutter for the blocks adjacent to that intersection. And it also includes the intersection of New Haven and gutter and sidewalk driveway replacement in front of Firehouse one. So it's a drainage project that replaces the seeping system, the storm drain inlet and piping across Winchester at both of those intersections, but it also includes gutter and flapper.
That's what we've got, that's what's settled up on Firehouse. That is great. Three inches?
Yeah. The Wellington Avenue and Lafayette Avenue Drainage Project that I am preparing the R F P for Engineering Services, that should go out next week. And we look to have a recommendation to commissioners in February for the award of that contract. That will be the intersection of Lafayette and Wellington, where water hole was standing water constantly at that intersection, and also a drainage system that exists in Paper Street of Wellington Avenue behind. And also a drainage system that exists in Paper Street of Wellington Avenue behind Kingsley Drive, which takes some of the storm drain from Kingsley Drive.
Is that past the school anyways?
That's correct. Drainage Improvement Marshall Avenue and Oxford Avenue, that's in front of Waterview Apartments. And that RFP also will be out next week and I hope to have prices and a recommendation to the commissioners by the end of the month. Library Window Replacement, that is also going out for professional services. That will be the replacement of the windows at the library. And it will also include the rear doors to that facility coming from that parking lot. Would have a accessible parking, automated opener.
Hardwired, right?
Hardwired. We've learned our lesson in hardwiring here, so it will be hardwired. I'm also working on NJEIT applications. There'll be two applications, one for clean water, which is our sanitary sewer mains. And one for drinking water, which is obviously the water main. Commissioners had approved an ordinance in, in I think two thousand seventeen for several streets to be replaced. It's two applications. Starts with a letter of intent. I'm working on that with NJEIT. We'll take you through that process and then our two commissioners update it as we go along.
And joint flash is a system of that, right?
Playground repairs. We have some significant playground repairs. I need to meet with Toro soon to review the capital. And that will be going out to engineering RFP as well very, very soon. CAFRA permit for the modifications for the fishing grounds, restrooms, office and concession stands are out for prices. And we, I think they expect, we see those proposals the end of this month. And that's to modify the CAFRA permits for that year. And that's all.
Thank you. That's a lot. Can I have a copy of that? I do want to thank you and I'm sure any of the commissioners and our administrator. The holiday decoration, the lights, city hall, the library, the streets. And those beautiful, beautiful, huge snowflakes that you put in that beautiful building, Public Works. When I made, when I got down that street and I was in awe. So I thank the crew and I thank you because I know it was a lot.
Yeah, yes. Kevin Cannon did most of the lighting of the buildings. And a crew of men did the holiday decorations and policies in the buildings. So I will, I will spread the word to Kevin.
And next year we just, we may need instructions to light the Christmas tree. Actually, Commissioner Landgraf and Commissioner Crebel might need instructions. I figured it out.
Somebody should give us direction how to turn them on. I think they were already taken care of. That's your idea, don't worry.
I figured it out.
We will simplify. Please try.
Open, open the box on the little door and hit the button. But no, but everything was great. Took three of us. We got it down. Thank you, Ed. Do you need this back? Thank you, thank you. Well, I'll let Ernie, I'm going to have you piggyback because you are the director of Wood and Sewer, correct? To whatever, whatever title you want to be.
Just order.
Yeah, go ahead. Director, department head.
With the end of the year, I have totals of the amount of drink reported that we put into this system. It was four hundred and thirty-two million. This is actually nine million then the year before, two thousand seventeen. That's not very much of a jump. As we see in the next few years when we start to have more of our oats occupied, we're going to see that number go up. As has been heard tonight, more and more people were moving into Venter. And with that, we're going to use more and more water. As far as capacity is concerned, we have the capacity in the parking lot for water and we're in very good shape. As far as December, we did twenty-five million. That's pretty much average for the month. I looked over the last five years and that's pretty much what we've done for December. As for compliance, I can, I'm happy to announce that was a hundred percent compliance for the year, which is great for drinking water. You always want that.
We got good water.
As far as sewer is concerned, we kept compliance with that. That is basically generalized under the Clean Water Act. We are both followed for drinking water by the New Jersey DEP. And on an annual basis, we receive inspections. And they're very much, very on top of it. And that helps for the drinking water program in itself in that you know they're going to come. With the new year, we're going to be starting all of our sampling again for compliance. This is our base sampling that we have to do every year. As far as that's concerned. With sticking with drinking water, I'm going to be developing Water Quality Assurance Act document for Venter.
Go ahead.
Basically what this is, is going to be our document that we're going to have to abide by for going through all of our systems, pumps, motors, tanks, elevated tanks, water mains, services, and how we're going to maintain them going forward. That is part of the regulation that was adopted about a year ago by New Jersey DEP. So I'll be following through with that in the next three to five months. As far as replacements, as was mentioned before by Ed, they did a lot of gas replacements, South Jersey Gas in the Heights. We're going to be going in there before they do the gutter replacements and the pavement, the new pavement. We're going to be replacing any valves or hydrants that need to be done in that area. So we're out of there when the new paving and construction comes through. Our valter, our valter is being used, which I'm very happy to say. We're going through the heights, we're concentrating up there. If we find any problems with our infrastructure, it'll be fixed before we do any paving. Hydrants, we're on a hybrid kit at Water and Sewer. We're going through and we're replacing all the older hydrants. We've got quite a bit to go. What's kind of forcing this is that the Water Quality Assurance Act has a stipulation that you have to label hydrants. And you have to label it with an initial, ours are VC zero one through VC three hundred and fifty. And in order to label so for the older hydrants, some of the older hydrants are not capable of labeling. There's no bolt on there. The hydrants actually can be replaced anyway, so we're going to be going through and doing that. In the area over probably the next three, four years, probably about four to fifty.
A lot of them over. That's really in the.
So. Hydrants about three thousand dollars. It's, it's pretty pricey.
Are there grants out there?
It's in the capital.
It's in capital. Working through with that. Don't want to throw anybody for a loop with that.
My application's important for insurance.
I know.
Chief and I, as you just mentioned, gave you the thought that we're working together. We're getting everything on a base map. That way they know where it is, I know where it is, we know how that's just being used. It's going to give us a clear picture and we're going to be able to click on a computer and actually see what's going on as far as our system is concerned. Jump to waste footer. The actual system is running well. We have a couple of pump stations that are in need of some pump replacement and we're working through that. A lot of that is due to age and we're going to get everything on a schedule. So it's on a timed maintenance program over the next few years. And that will be pretty much it for me.
Thank you, thank you. So Lisa, Lisa Han, our municipal clerk.
So I just have a little round book.
Okay, a round book.
Yeah, so I went through my, my records. So her vital statistics, we finished up with a hundred and forty-seven certified copies, forty-six marriage license, four hundred and seventy-six desert certificates. Her dog license. We, yeah, four seventy-six for custody, desert certificates. Dog licenses were three seventy-one, which is really down from two thousand seventeen because in two thousand seventeen we did five hundred and thirty-six. Mercantiles, we did a hundred and thirty-eight. We got four hundred and twenty-three resolutions, forty-eight ordinances. And beach badges. So I have these numbers through December thirty-first, just to show you compared from last season to this season. So this season for the holiday badges, we sold a hundred and ninety-five. And last year we sold a hundred and fifty-two, so we're up from there. For seasonal badges, this year we sold three hundred and forty-seven. And last year we sold three hundred and six, so we were up. And for senior badges, we sold fifty-nine this year and last year we had seventy-five sold. So that's a little down.
Those numbers represent what time period?
Through December thirty-fourth.
Not the whole summer?
No, 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 no. So just so you could see.
I got you.
So you could see where we were compared to where we were at, yeah.
Good, good, okay, great.
And there is a CMR certification class coming up the end of January that Al is looking to enroll in.
Great.
So that he would be certified that he could, you know, help with certificates and stuff. And that's about it.
Okay, great. Toro, this is your last time to speak at our meeting.
All right, so I gave you the standard report. I put them on Excel this time because they might be easier to read. The first sheet is just a snapshot of where we are as far as our money is concerned in the bank. We have just over thirty million throughout all of our accounts, twenty-three of them. I would say we are in good financial shape. Of course, our auditors will be in on Monday to start looking at our twenty eighteen books to see how well we kept the books. We are finally closed in our payroll and finance module, which means we're officially in twenty nineteen. So we can begin the business of twenty nineteen. There's still a module to be closed that is the HR, which keeps our attendance, our sick communication and all that. That I'll try to close sometime next week.
Roll over yet?
Uh, roll over is done.
So we can.
Yeah, you can begin the twenty nineteen work. Even though the, the financial software is closed, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done to properly close it. There's a lot of journal entries that still have to be done. And I'll be working on that. The auditors will be in and they will help a little bit with that. I'm also giving you the revenue report for both current fund and utility fund. Shows where, how we ended the year as far as each revenue line is concerned. The only one that's down, as we've been talking about all year long, is the ordinance. It's not by much, but it is down.
Toro, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Liquor license, I mean alcohol, the licenses?
Yes.
Both licenses were paid for in eighteen, am I correct?
It's twenty nineteen, but we didn't get the check until nineteen. So we just got, it was just a positive.
Okay. So you'll see that in nineteen? I know, yeah, I just, I was, no, I, we got it in nineteen. Okay. I thought we got it the last week in December.
But they had time to get it to us, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Why, why didn't they come in?
No, we just, I mean, we just got it. Like, it was, it was two thousand nineteen.
Oh, okay.
When we brought, yeah.
So this revenue represents the first one?
The first license and the liquor stores, yes, yes. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, it, it's, we, when we collect taxes, we don't just collect for Venter City. We collect for the county and we collect for the school. And we pay the school and we pay the county. So we always pay them in full. So the county taxes, in this case, were over twenty-nine million. We have to pay them all the entire twenty-nine million, so. And then the same thing with the school. We have to pay the school fully, a hundred percent. So whatever is not collected is on the city and we have a line a little further down that makes up for that. So all the way at the top, you see that we brought in forty-seven, five fifty-four. We still have to split that up. I still have to do journal entries that splits that up to show the county taxes, the school debt. And, and then the rest of it is ours and then we have the liquid taxes to make up for that. All of the revenues did well. We have some that stand out. And as you go down, you can see, starting with the liquor license, of course. Yeah, that's pretty good. So, and then you have your budget reports. You have the current fund, which is the bigger one, and then water sewer.
Before you go on, just parking meter.
That did very well too.
Two hundred percent?
Yeah, that did very well.
Sorry.
And then, based on what we budgeted, it did very well. And last year we didn't probably, we didn't even make a hundred thousand, I think, last year. I think we were about sixty last year.
We can budget one forty-five in nineteen.
Yeah.
Really important.
It is.
Right. Beach badges went up one hundred and twenty percent?
Yeah.
Um, based on what we budgeted, this is not, the two twenty-five is not actually all that we collected in twenty seventeen. But we didn't want to budget the full amount, just in case. So we always leave a little room.
Right.
And then you have your budget reports, your current fund report and water sewer report. We didn't spend all of the money that we budgeted. We, and it's always a good thing that we don't spend everything because we can cancel some that go into reserve. We still have some bills to pay from twenty eighteen. All of those are in convert already, hopefully. So we'll pay those bills as they come from the conferences that we have. Whatever is not spent gets rolled into fund balance in a couple of years. For, for water, for, yeah, for current. And then water is about sixty-two, which is good. The water utility needs to be self-prepared and it is. So next week, there's a, there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be done to completely close of twenty eighteen. I'll continue to work on this. We have the, trying to implement or import the attendance record from the new time clock in Venter. So we can use that for our payroll next week. We're going to start to do that. But I need someone to start to keep an eye on that. Someone to take the lead on that. That's going to give guidance to our payroll clerk. So somebody needs to kind of shadow me as we talk to Venter about the time we're going to run into as we try to do the import. And that's about it.
Thank you. Next is Chief Cahill. You've been up since one AM?
Yeah, been a long day. All right, I just have a quick report, our December responses. I have our end of year totals and then some capital notes. The month of December, we responded to thirty-four fire responses, including a mutual aid fire in Atlantic City. Ninety emergency service responses and a hundred and forty-nine emergency medical responses. Totally did two hundred and seventy-three calls for the month. Closing out the year for two thousand eighteen, we were way over our numbers from two thousand seventeen. By over ten percent increase in call volume. And we're trying to figure out where that increased call volume comes from. It's not necessarily a lot more medical or a lot more fire. I think it's a lot more calls or requiring more vehicles and more invasive treatment and work from the guys, so. Is that more vehicles responding, that ups the call volume. So we're working on what we can do to try to, uh, adjust our operational tempo with our personnel. But for two thousand eighteen, we responded to four hundred and four fire responses, that's seven point four percent over the year before. Twelve hundred and ninety-four emergency service calls, that is four point six percent, up from seven two thousand seventeen. And eighteen hundred and five EMS calls, that was up one point eight percent. Total call volume for the fire department is thirty-five hundred and three calls, that's three hundred and twelve over two thousand seventeen. Uh, ten point two percent increase in call volume for the year. Uh, we're averaging over ten point four calls a day. Things are picking up, and it's.
When you say day, is that a twenty-four hour?
Twenty-four hour shift. And our calls can be anything from we show up, we help somebody lift a system, we're out of there fifteen minutes, or we can be on scene for fifteen hours. That's last time we were on scene for about eight hours on the fire of our veterans. So the call volume doesn't necessarily reflect a total number of hours or minutes on scene. It's just we're, we're way busier than we have been in the past, and it doesn't seem like that trend is gonna diminish. Um, the capital notes for the fire department, uh, in Bravo. Vetner City has joined the HGA-C, which is the Houston-Galluston area council, it's a co-op for purchasing vehicles and equipment on a national level, not just a state level. We were able to get our new ambulance, which is on order, through them, a probably five percent reduction in cost in terms of the state and New Jersey pricing, which is pretty good. Uh, we're gonna be trying to use them for advanced purchases in vehicles and equipment if we can get the prices, uh, if they're meeting our needs and our budget. So we're, we're pretty happy with that, and Tora was gigantic in helping us get organized with that and Kathy. Uh, the new ambulance is due sometime in the beginning of the summer of two thousand nineteen, and that will take the place and remove the vehicle from service that's seventeen years old. And that vehicle is gonna get stepped down and go over public works, and they're gonna use it for something over there.
We might use it for inspections.
It's one of those things that it's, we're trying.
Too big for that.
Well, well, our vehicles, well, we gave Jimmy his last car for.
That worked well.
We're trying to. Uh, our vehicles normally have fifteen, seventeen years of service in them when we move them out, and they're, we're kept in the best shape we can, but we're starting to put some serious. Run on, so our maintenance, uh, has increased a little bit, but we need to keep these vehicles for up to twenty years. It's, uh, it's working out okay, though. Our repair prices this year, and cost of repair went down about thirty percent because of last year's prevented maintenance that was, uh, was conducted. Uh, our Station Two project is, I believe that comes in tomorrow, is it tomorrow for that?
February seventh, oh, sorry, January seventeenth.
January seventeenth, there was a change in that date, so there's an extension on that next Thursday. Um, so that's, that was still being really good with a lot of vendors that were acquiring at the, at the pre-construction meeting.
Right.
And we have a lot of serious vendors on that, so hopefully it keeps the price in downforce.
Have any bids come in yet?
Not that.
Are they all good?
I, I would be, oh, not anyway, I would go to the regulars.
Yeah, not true for January seventeenth.
But that project is moving, we're way ahead of the schedule from where we could be from now. I was pretty good about, please, and, and Evans and Plough, make help on that one, Kathy, I can't think of anything else. We're, uh, starting two thousand nineteen on a, on a high note here. See where she goes.
I'm glad to hear that everybody was saved after wrestling, but.
Yeah, it was a pretty good start, the second, doing a good job, we got a lot of mutual aid came in and helped us and covered the city. And we were able to limit the damage to the two structures that were already in pot when we got there, if you have any further ground.
Good question. You're involved with the county training, ha- have you talked to any other chiefs in the municipalities about the increase? Why and a reason?
In Atlantic County, the, the call volume by department, Atlantic City is the highest call volume, we're second. Pleasantville's behind us now.
Wow.
Well, Pleasantville doesn't cover EMS anymore, that's a private contractor over there, and their reduction in services is kind of noticeable by the.
We're number two in the county.
We're number two in the county in call volume.
We gotta have this, something, not all of them.
Atlantic City's vehicles, you know, fire vehicles respond to basically the same EMS type, type calls, they just don't transfer. So they're going through the same, it's just a bigger city. And sadly, they're responding to a lot more of this, uh, truck, this problem in New York. And it's, it's a shame, I just go on the radio every month, I have a dozen of that.
A day.
Staff, would you like to have a comment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then last but not least, our police chief.
First, our annual report, it's a lot more, it's encompassing than his, so it's not going to be ready until February. Because our annual report does every individual officer and every employee. And we take in, uh, not only every call, but we break it down to type of call, so ours is a little bit different. We use the Uniform Crime Report, which is UCR, so it breaks it down into everything, so you actually look at the actual calls we're handling. And it's, two thousand eighteen was quite good. So besides that, uh, I'll tell you what we're doing now, line signs and meters, myself and the city administrator will be going out and prepping that. So that springtime, everything's in place, uh, we're gonna, spots that are missing meters, we'll have them. Loading zones will be reconfigured and added, uh, meters to them. I, I could go so many places with the loading zones, but, uh, Vetner has morphed and changed as it's needed to. And I, I think the direction we're headed, uh, the fact that our inter-offices, Jimmy and Masina, um, Ed and Mike, we all work together. Along with the, uh, along with the finance, I, I think we've got the best relationship possible. Jimmy has a problem, he calls me, um, I deal with it, I get back to him, we'll mark it off his list. What? Um, actually, um, I just talked to Jimmy about a car, and I will be out of my capital. I'll be sharing, because we'll get two cheap cars, cheaper, no frills, focus, no air conditioning, no mirrors. Don't you see on the Russian YouTube videos, you know, right? You know? But it's not, not, right, you're not a con, you're gonna, you go. Right, or, or old Pintum, but yes, we are gonna be getting a new car, we already, we already talked about it, so we'll sit down with Kathy and get the best deal we can. So we can get them at least a car and, uh. No, we're gonna try and get two, like I said, no frills cars, and I'll probably be able to, uh, work with, uh, getting one police SUV this year. Uh, we'll make that work, so. That was seven, yeah, we'll drink a cup of coffee, but I think we're just talking, so, so we took care of that. Um, one of the big things is going to be, uh, with the uptick in crime. Now, when I say crime, just the, the stuff that gets published and hits the social media. What I'm going to be doing this summer is I'm going to be putting class twos on the boardwalk, along with class ones, and they are firearms carrying. Just to add an extra layer of security, nothing's ever been needed, but just, I think optics will be good, and, uh, I think it's needed. Um, just for the impression the public will have, and we'll see, our officers must like they have in Atlantic City, Ocean City. I just think we're just going with the times, and I think if the time is right for that. So instead of having like eight class ones, which are nine, they're on fire and carrying, we'll be probably splitting them to, uh, four and four, four class ones, four class twos. So we'll have a little extra added protection. Again, that's not because it's necessarily needed, but I'd rather be safe than sorry, and, uh, that's the.
Stay out of the problem.
Yep.
But isn't, isn't it also that the class fours have more?
Arrested law.
More arrest law?
Yeah, with the, with the, uh, the type of enforcement we're gonna be having, and the type of laws that keep getting passed on a state level, um. With the smoking ban on the beaches and, uh, you know, I think there's gonna be outlaw flash ones soon, so I mean, we're gonna have to have a lot of, um, a lot of enforcement. So I'm serious, though. I mean, we're really, because what's gonna happen is you're gonna have one person complaining about, whether it's plastic bags, whether it's cigarette butts, whether it's somebody vaping. So with that, you have to look at the collateral issues that go along with that. It's going to require somebody to go down there and enforce it. Would you rather have one of my class ones who have, they're just out of college, these kids? If you want them dealing with it, or if you want somebody, because what's gonna happen is, the people in the cell are gonna get irritated. Somebody's gonna start giving some, and I just think the, again, the optics of having the type of enforcement. Uh, a, a person that can and will arrest you if they get disorderly about it, I think the tone's gonna have to be set right from the get-go. And it's not to be, you know, nasty, it's just people that are visiting this town, or that utilize our facilities, are gonna have to understand there are laws. And we, once state laws are passed, we have to enforce them. And it's not a fun thing enforcing, it never is. But if we get that out there early, and let them know, hey, this is the law, this is what you can and can't do, we will be enforcing. I think that sets the tone, and nobody can cry foul. If, you know, so, it's not a fun part of my job, it is a factual part of it. So we're just getting ahead of the game, that's all we're doing. I mean, all joking aside, we get over-rented, and nobody ever thinks of the enforcement aspect of it, so it falls on me. And I'm gonna take it very serious. And then let the people complain to the local politicians, and then they can make change. But it's not gonna be from me not enforcing it. So that's the bottom line. Okay? Alright, on top of that, we have, uh, two retirees coming up with Captain Charles Wood, who did twenty-five years, and Sergeant Bernie Jenkins. They will be extremely tough to replace, but as we all know, everybody's replaceable. So, so, um, we, we will, I mean, they're not moving to another city for better pay or whatever. They're simply, they're simply retiring, and, and I will miss you. But, uh, they, Captain Wood and Sergeant Jenkins were extremely good officers, and, uh, I have them on the inside for the tail end of their career. And there's a reason for that, is that, uh, the tail end of a career, people call it terminally, it's not really that. I don't want them getting involved in anything that's going to be, um, extending their career past their retirement. As, uh, as, uh, Tim knows, that, I don't wanna call them back for court cases. So what we do is we pull them off the streets for the last few months of their career, utilizing them inside. They get a lot of work done. Officer Jen, Sergeant Jenkins is gonna be actually training everybody in CPR. Sergeant, uh, Captain Wood is gonna make sure that Lieutenant Fuster, who's gonna be taking his job, is, knows everything to do with his part of the job, so. It makes sense, and then nobody's gonna be called in for court in April and May when they're down in the Keys sign. So, um, it works out well. Another good thing we're gonna be adding is, uh, we started this month, you can see on our Facebook page is the Police Blotter. So, uh, you'll see people that are getting arrested, for those of you who think that Vetner's, uh, Mayberry, and you wanna know who's getting arrested. We're gonna do like a lot of other cities do, and you'll be able to see your names in there, some of your own source. We're gonna get put over for DWI's and stuff, a lot of departments do it. And I figured that'll last probably for about two months before somebody calls and complains, and I'll be in the Police Blotter. But with that, we aren't going to destroy it until, uh, it's, it's the wrong person, or we arrest the wrong person's son. So with that, uh, again, working with the building department, which is great, we now have access, once the computer system's up and running. We'll have access to their, what they see for COs, it's gonna make the issuance of summons and calling the bluffs of these people that are wanting to our face. We will be working, they do, they people are just, they do.
Yeah, I can see what it's like.
They, 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 they do. So me and Jimmy have been planning on this for a while. Where we're gonna be working together, um, stuff that he sees on the street that requires a follow-up observation. He's gonna give it to my guys while they're on patrol, and he'll say, hey, there's that address? Yep, they still haven't painted their house, I'll get back to him with a, a check, yes or no? And then he can follow up with a letter, or whatever they're gonna do, so. It's, uh, my guys are out there for twelve hours, we're utilizing them to assist other departments. Same thing with Ed Stinson, we've worked great, whenever we had an issue with signs going down, I'd simply call him, boom, 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 it gets done as soon as possible. Um, same thing with Mike Cahill, me and Mike have, again, known each other for, since childhood. We are now purchasing things together in bulk. We're working together with, um, training, with, uh, CPR, with Narcan, which is, we're just usually on a crazy level. And then we're buying it in bulk, and it works well. Uh, I think we have a unique relationship with our department, and our department heads, I've never seen it before, where we're all working together, I think it's awesome. Okay, we went through Tora, body worn cameras, and motor vehicle cameras, that's gonna be going into effect within the next two weeks. We're doing the training now. It's a wake-up call for everybody out there, um, 'cause I'm not worried about my guys. I'm worried about the people, I'm worried about the people that are gonna be accusing my guys of something that's just, you know, wrong, or not in that lie. It works both ways, I think the public needs to know that, is that these cameras have worked, um, more to protect officers and prove their point than it has to ever, um, nail an officer for wrongdoing. It's gonna happen, we'll be, we'll be utilizing it both, uh, from the public perspective and the perspective of investigations and internal affairs. But the internal affairs aspect of it is a very, very small part of it, and it really is to protect the city liability-wise, the officers. And it's, uh, it's a dose of reality for training, I'm sure everybody's seen the videos on YouTube and those basic things, so. Look for that to be up and running before the end of the month, or by February, at the latest, and I'm excited about that, and so are my officers. So, um, there's gonna be a learning curve, but we put a lot of money into it, uh, IT's helped out a lot, and I'll get into IT probably next month. When we have a more clear idea of where that's going. But that's, uh, pretty much it. We did start the year off with, uh, an issue, but again, it's, these aren't Vetner people. Anything can happen anywhere on any given day. And that's what people have to keep into, into, you know, proper perspective, is that, yeah, we did have a shooting. With that said, it wasn't Vetner people, it wasn't locals, that were, uh, other people out of town following the laws at the time. And, yes, somebody did bring a firearm to a party and utilize it. Things that happened beforehand when police were called, we arrested four people prior to our response to the firearms call there, and we're doing our job, and we're handling it. And when we're ha, when we are involved from the get-go and handling it, people aren't getting hurt. We're, we're diffusing situations, this is exactly what we should be doing. We have an awesome mutual aid with other departments, as the fire department does, and we work great with our fire department. We've got each other's backs, and I think that's unheard of in most cities, and that's the way we do it here in Vetner, and it's, in my opinion, it's a model that other cities should follow. So, there we go. I do.
I agree with Cam, so I think it is gonna.
Yep.
Really help your officers out.
I agree, I agree, and they agree too. They agree too, there's a good bunch of, uh, men and women I've worked with, so. And if I can be excused.
Actually, I'm gonna, um, make a motion for a, I have to walk.
Alright.
Motion for?
A five-minute, yeah, it's only a five-minute break. Well, no, because we still have the rest of our workshop with Devon. From our department heads' portion, do you have a second? All in favor?
Do you have a motion to go back into the workshop?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second move.
All in favor? The following items are scheduled for action at our regular meeting immediately following the workshop. We do not have any minutes, we will have two ordinances and abductions, one is two thousand nineteen, because zero, zero, one, and that's the ordinance of the city of Vetner County in Atlantic State, New Jersey. Creating section ninety of the Code of the City of Vetner entitled Rehabilitation of Abandoned Properties. So who would like to chat about that? Tim?
Yeah, sure. That is a combined project between the city and the Atlantic County Improvement Department. There's statutory scheme enacted whereby municipalities can actually go into court, and the ultimate remedy is to take over properties that are deemed abandoned. Uh, and need rehabilitation. Part of the statutory scheme allows you to, uh, work in conjunction with or designate an entity who will act on behalf of the city. The city has passed, this will be the beginning of the process of passing, uh, ordinances which will, A, begin that abandoned property. Scheme in the city of Vetner to repair the abandoned property. properties, fix them up, and, two, authorize the Atlanta County Improvement Authority to act on behalf of the city. Once this is adopted, Jimmy and Lisa will have to work together to publish the abandoned properties list in the paper, and notify the homeowners that they're on the list, and basically, once that is done, the processing and going forward concerning the abandoned properties and the rehabilitation switches to the Atlanta County Improvement Authority. So this is just the first step in the process.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else to say?
Just that I had responded to a couple of comments on our social media that was, trying, didn't understand necessarily the process, and that this is not something that the city benefits from in a financial way, it actually passes through, it's that there's, there's some actual cost that we may not recover, like advertising, things like that. But it's, but the main goal of it, and the main reason when we saw this happening in other towns, that we reached out to the CIA, was that it's an improvement to a down, to a, to a street, to a city that can, that can take a, a abandoned property off that street, and encourage others that end up on that list to improve their own. So it's, it's, it's just a way of helping to turn around the city. I was actually surprised to see there were only four that were earmarked at this point, I thought there were even...
I thought there was five.
Yeah, there's five. To answer that question, Commissioner Crevel, you can always add to the list, you can always add to the list and detract from the list, we wanted to dip our toe in the pool, so to speak, and see what happens.
Great.
I did the same thing, Commissioner Crevel, that some questions on, on social media came up, I answered a couple of them. This is not eminent domain, it's not taking properties for that aspect, for the city to own them, we don't want to own them. We don't clean up these properties that have been left in a dilapidated state for far too long, clean up that for the neighbors that live in that neighborhood, and get the properties back on, out of the market to sell, or back to the others, they will have first right of refusal to purchase these. For the most part, we hope they do.
And they can come in at any time during the process, petition the court. But the court will require them to have legitimate rehabilitation plans and means of financing that plan.
I was impressed with the ACIA's criteria that have to be met to consider even for this type of process. There's, there's a number of different criteria, they have to meet at least four on that, you know, those, those requirements in order to achieve it. So it's not something that's just been done on a whim, or through some complaint system, these are actual criteria that have to be met, and that they then in turn say that this can be rehabbed and not be a burden to rehab. So, there's really, like you had said previously, there's very little downside, more opportunity for upside, and, and this is a, I think it's an emerging market in general.
And those requirements, Commissioner, come right out of the statute?
Right. Great. Great, we're part of it. And we're first. How about that?
We're first, ways the trail. Okay, next we have an abduction, ordinance 2019-002, and that's an ordinance in the City of Vetner, County of Atlanta State, New Jersey, amending the Vetner Worth East Redevelopment Plan.
This is the theater district?
Oh, it's a theater district.
Yeah, this is theater area. This has been hanging on for a little while, probably could've come to us a little bit sooner, but we had some things we tweaked, this'll help, not only the theater, but other government in that area, just to bring it up to date, and redevelopment area up to date, kind of redevelopment plan, so, just gets that moving. It's an amendment to an existing plan that helps businesses as they are starting to evolve in that area. We did that one, that's...
We did that one, so this is the...
Well, actually, we did portions of it.
Right.
That plan itself, redevelopment designated that area.
Right.
The, the plan itself is in draft, we shared that with the developer out there, and we're working through that process with Jim Rattella and the property dealers consultant, to get the plan that works best for everybody. So, you know, phone conference call Tuesday morning, and we talked about that, and got some things resolved, and that'll come back, that's probably in the next month.
Is there architectural forensics on that? No, it's more about...
It's, it's, that's actually one of the things we talk about, design criteria, and when that would kick in. So that would not kick in, say, if they just wanted to do the interior work for the, one of the things they wanna do out there is self storage. So, they wouldn't be required to redo the facade of the building, if they're just doing things in the existing building there. If they went to, one of the options out there is to add to the building, in a vertical with it, there would be steps, and pardon me for this coughing, apologize for the voice and the piercingness of the coughing, it's gonna sound really good on the tape.
How you feel, Gallow?
Yeah, it's good. The, it would kick in at certain stages, and that's what Jim Rattella's working on now. What I wanted them to focus on was landscaping. It's difficult there because of its location, it floods, over high tide, you can't get vegetation that's gonna live through that. So it may be more risky to issue, so. So, those are, those are things we're talking about.
Anything else on that? The next part, we will, we have a very long list of resolutions to go on by consent, so I'm gonna run by them, if anyone wants to interject, how about you just interject?
You just don't listen to them.
I have, Tim said I have to say.
Just read it the first time, you don't have to.
And I'm just gonna go from one to another, without asking if you guys, if anybody has anything to say, just jump in. First resolution, 2019-001, award contractor Parker McKay for conflict solicitor. Next, 2019-002, award contractor William Reynolds for city prosecutor. 2019-003, award contractor Darren Lord for public offender. 2019-004, award contractor Fort Scott Associates for city auditor. 2019-005, award contractor Hank Burglar for general tax counsel. 2019-006, award contract to, is that CJ Adams? Yeah, CJ Adams, Stanley Gunnison for risk management consultant. 2019-007, award contractor James Rattella for planning and grant consultant. 2019-008, award contractor Professional Benefit Consultants Incorporated for healthcare broker. 2019-009, award contract to, COG, right? COG? For drug and alcohol testing. 2019-010, award contract to Archer and Bryer for bond counsel. 2019-011, award contract to NW Financial LLC for continuing disclosure agent. 2019-012, award contract to NW, NW Financial LLC for financial advisor. 2019-013, award contract to Joel Fleishman for NJEIT financing for bond counsel. 2019-014, authorizing, is it Crutchell? Guccio Pepper, DeSanzo and Ruth as labor count relations councils. 2019-015, award contract to city solicitor Timothy McGuire. 2019-016, authorize annual schedule for city commission meetings and sunshine notice. 2019-017, designation, designation of official newspaper.
Newspapers.
Newspapers, sorry. 2019-018, designate public agency compliance officer for the City of Vetner. 2019-019, resolution of the City of Vetner, County of Atlanta State, New Jersey, establishing rules of order and conduct for city commission meetings. 2019-020, designate bank depositories. 2019-021, authorize the contact person to access the employment practice liability consultant services. 2019-022, appoint fund commissioner and alternative fund commissioner for the ACGMIF. 2019-023, adopt cash management plan. 2019-024, authorize tax assessor to handle appeals. 2019-025, authorizing the Jif safety coordinator. 2019-026, authorizing the tax collector to charge interest on any delinquent taxes, property and sewer after the due date for the payment of the same, and ten-day grace period for the year of 2019. 2019-027, authorizing tax collector to process property and or sewer tax refund and cancellation of refund of delinquency of less than ten dollars for the year of 2019. 2019-028, appointment of custodial records for the police department. 2019-029, appointment of class three member, class three members to the planning board. 2019-030, temporary budget for 2019. 2019-031, authorizing public employee bonds. 2019-032, authorizing Atlanta care service, the city physician for fire, police, public safety, and new hires. 2019-033, appointments to the planning board. 2019-034, appointing a green team advising, advisory committee. 2019-035, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with emergency training and consulting. 2019-036, authorizing an unpaid leave of absence for a city employee. 2019-037, accepting the resignation of Toro Aberdeen. 2019-038, authorizing a tax abatement for Block 117, Lot 3, also known as 6005 Winchester Avenue. 2019-039, appointing Thomas M. Halpin as fire official. 2019-040, awarding Remington and Burnick engineers for Winchester add drainage improvements, design and construction management services. 2019-041, appointing the City of Vetner Municipal Alliance Committee members. 2019-042, authorizing the City of Vetner to enter into an interlocal service agreement with the Borough Alon Court for sharing of the construction officials. 2019-043, authorizing a stipend to be paid to John Connor to serve as an on-call employee for the Sewer Department. 2019-044, authorizing a stipend to be paid to Wayne Coleman to serve as an on-call employee for the Sewer Department. Next, we will have approval of bills and payrolls, any discussion items, and now, may I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor? I see no public.
I was very impressed with that list you just went through, you did a phenomenal job. I wouldn't believe how heart attack trying to do that is, with the cough going, I would...
We're mentioning those, a lot of those appointments are exactly the people that we have in place now.
Absolutely. A lot of it is just your first meeting of the year.
Right, so it's, we're, good team in place.
Yes. Well, I will say something, as you say, good team in place, and I, we took the five-minute break, there was a couple here that moved from Absekin to Vetner. And they stopped me in the hallway, and they wanted to tell me that they're very impressed, they enjoyed the department heads, the information, and they said anybody that they've talked to in City Hall have been nothing but the most professional, pleasant people, they've dealt with code, they've dealt with, I forget, what other department, and they raved about our city clerk, who happens to be sitting, sitting to my, right, so, it was...
Were they late to her?
No, they're not, and they were, I mean, it was really nice, that these residents, they said, were so glad we moved to Vetner, and they, they're not from, like, out of town, they went from Absekin to here, and they, it was kudos after kudos, so that was nice. So, I don't see any, oh, I do see someone, I'm sorry, Pat, you weren't in there two seconds ago, this is the public portion, if you like to talk about it, anything that we're gonna vote on?
I had a coffee smell, sorry. No, I just want the comment over there.
You have to come up, I know you, but they may not, you have to state your name and your address.
Patrick Klein, 404 North Dorset Avenue, in Vetner, been a resident for, since 1995. So I want the comment on the January sixth article in the newspaper, Atlanta City Press, but the Airbnbs, it's my biggest beef in Vetner right now, I mean, I have no other beefs in Vetner, period, I think everybody's doing a fabulous job, everybody. Airbnb is my biggest enemy right now, my one friend, he hit, he'll leave, Fred, he lives on one side, on the other side, his house in between is just, it's just a nuisance home, and it's been that way since last year, actually, this, this month last year was just horrible, and they've been renting, I, I just totally against Airbnbs, and I think Vetner needs to really break wagging on these people.
Are they renting, is it constant?
Well, I had really two horrible episodes, I have police reports in my pocket right now, I can't be comfortable every Friday, knowing who's gonna be my neighbor, it's just horrible, all through the summer, at the jockey cars, never knowing, are my regular owners coming down, or there's gonna be the Airbnb people, and it's a bath-and-a-half home, had over twenty people in the home, over twenty people, twenty-five maybe.
So it's not based on bathrooms, the occupancy is based on square?
Occupancy is out of control, nine cars in front of, you know, you know where I live, nine cars plus, using CBS parking lot, Acme parking lot, you know, it's been quite a few episodes, not just the...
It's the house to your...
The old Johnson home.
Okay, it's the house to your left.
Yes, and Fred's house to the right.
So you did the right thing by, by calling the police, that's one of the...
I did, I reported.
And we asked you to continue to do that.
So what, what we passed at our last meeting?
I got you.
So what, what that will help with, is that once we require these mercantile licenses for these, we cannot stop them.
I got you, I know that.
We can't. People out of rent their homes out.
I just want to bring, why it's fresh in everybody's mind, I saw an article, I was like, oh my God, this is great, so, you know, everybody...
What we hope that'll happen is, that when these mercantile licenses are, are issued, everyone's gonna have to get one, and Jimmy's actually looking at other ways with our solicitor to...
Yeah, I've been in touch with code enforcement all through the last year, Jimmy knows me very, you know...
We didn't have any, we didn't have a hammer before, and there's, there's probably forty-plus Airbnbs and other, I don't wanna use Airbnb, 'cause that's, that's like Kleenex.
I've had nice name, you know, a nice Airbnb.
Short-term rentals, so there's forty-plus of them in the city, most of them are fine, we have probably a handful that are a problem. So, what we hope to be able to do with the mercantile license is that these problem properties, we don't, if we get enough complaints against them, with the police department and code, by yourselves, and I hate to put it on our residents, but that's kinda how we find out about it. We pull their mercantile, and then maybe they start screening their, their renters better.
Well, here with Airbnb, you don't have to screen.
Well, and they won't get a license to operate an Airbnb anymore.
But I'll keep, you know, banging on. One of the guys don't, 'cause it would let up.
Well, once this, once this ordinance takes effect, every time there's a problem, call it in.
Call it in, and it becomes part of the record, and other cities have this problem, Miami Beach raised it.
It's not a comfortable way to live, when I'm, you know, living there year-round with young kids, and never knew who my neighbors gonna be, it's, it stinks, man.
Well, this hopefully will give us some leverage.
So I just had, like, that's my, ten of us meeting, which I will come to more meetings now, you know, but, you know, I'm gonna pay for it.
So when you have a problem, you call the police.
Yeah, yeah, I could.
Absolutely.
Because then it helps us document it.
Exactly.
That's really why we passed the ordinance.
But it really is bringing my street down, I mean, you know people on my street, and they're like, oh my God, like, I'm not mentioning names, but it's, it's, it could get ugly, you know?
And you're Dorset Avenue.
Yeah.
You're, I mean, there's...
And you know my neighbors, so, and they do like, oh my God, this is like, they're like going nuts, you know, I have like, ten cars on the street one day, like, you know...
There's not enough parking for ten cars.
Four days in a row.
And, and the other thing that we talked about today is that the police department acts as the backup for...
And I don't wanna keep burdening the police department on this dumb stuff.
We need you to.
Well, no, I don't wanna call 911, 'cause it wasn't emergency, but it's really...
You can call non-merges, you can call the non-merges now.
Yeah, I know, I did.
Yeah.
And I was like, man, I hate to be a pain, and that's at two in the morning, but I did like, four times, in like, two and a half days.
If Chief Piazza was here, he'd tell you the same thing, call.
Just keep calling, if they're violating...
If they're violating the noise ordinance, you have to do it, Pat.
To not give them that license the next year.
Exactly.
Yeah. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
I don't think it's a good thing for Vetner, it's really not doing well. And the people that come in, they're not spending no money in this town. They're going away, it's just, you know, adding up.
That's your experience with one next to you. There's forty plus of them in the city that we don't have an issue with.
Right.
That are bringing pain to this, to our community.
And New Year's Day could've been an experience left in my house. I don't wanna see that happening, you know, the shooting and stuff.
So the number to call is eight-two-two-two-one-zero-one.
I got you.
Just for everybody in case those of you watching as well. And we thank you.
Alright.
Thanks, Tom.
I just wanted to bring your attention, and that is a great town to live in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else from the public?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting?
So moved.
And open the regular portion? Do I have a second?
Yes. Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now on our regular meeting. We have no minutes to approve. We have our first ordinance for introduction, ordinance 2019 dash zero one two. And that is section ninety of the Code of the City of Vetner entitled Rehabilitation of Abandoned Properties. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance? Introduce it, sorry.
Motion to introduce ordinance 2019 dash zero zero one.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Laibria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, ordinance for introduction is 2019 dash zero zero two. Ordinance in City of Vetner, County of Atlanta, State, New Jersey, amending the Northeast Redevelopment Plan. Do I have a motion?
Motion to introduce ordinance 2019 dash zero zero two.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Commissioner Laibria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. We do not have any public hearings, we do not have any ordinances to adopt. And we have, we will now adopt the resolutions by consent. There is on my paper for a public portion. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open public on resolutions only.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to close.
Motion to close, do I have a second?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know Lance gave me kudos for this list, but I'm not reading them again. Per our solicitor.
I can reverse it.
Yes, right, per our solicitor, I only have to read them once for the record. So, do I have a motion to adopt resolutions 2019 dash zero zero one through 2019 dash zero four four?
Motion to adopt resolutions 2019 dash zero zero one through 2019 zero four four by consent.
Do I have a second motion?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Mr. Laibria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Next, we have approval of our bills and payrolls. Lisa, can you read the amounts for me, please?
Certainly, we have bills in the amount of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and two cents. And we have payroll from twelve sixteen, two thousand and eighteen, to twelve twenty-nine, two thousand and eighteen, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty dollars, eighty-seven cents.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve bills and payroll?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Lisa, roll call please.
Commissioner Crevel?
Yes.
Mr. Laibria?
Yes.
Mayor Holtzman?
Yes. Do we have any announcements? Or, we do not have a safety report, am I correct?
No.
Any other announcements?